August the 6th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Please stand for the prayer by Reverend Blanks from New Era Baptist located on Highway 90, a historic church here in Gochae, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman College.
[inaudible] Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman College, and thank you Reverend Blanks. Just a reminder again to everybody that please silence your electronic devices. That brings us to agenda order of approval. Do we have any additions or deletions? Ms. Yancey?
Do you have something to remove from the agenda?
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. Listen.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda order approval?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Delott. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Yancey.
Our farmers market will be August 10th, which is this Saturday, starting at 8:00 AM at the former senior real property, Tuesday, Thursday, and lead up to August 22nd, starting at 11:00 AM at the former senior real property.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. We don't have a presentation agenda, so our, we'll move on to our business agenda. And first, business agenda item number one is discussion regarding the appointment of Victoria Hoover as Civil Service Commissioner by Ms. Pollyancy.
Yes, Mayor. [inaudible]
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion by council to appoint Dr. Victoria Hoover as Civil Service Commissioner?
[inaudible]
A motion by Councilman Alvin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So, am I correct? If I'm not correct, I'm just making sure. Is her husband on the plan?
Yes.
So legally, how is this? Because, you know, I don't, I'm just making sure.
Let me answer that, because I can put that in the email, was we got an Ethics Opinion order from the state of Mississippi to make sure that there's no conflict of interest through our attorney, Josh Dennis, and he came back that there is nothing illegal or...
That's right. Councilman College asked me to look into it, so I called the executive director of Ethics Commission, and I told him what the issue was, and he said, there's no conflict, there's no, one person doesn't have a supervisory role over the other, and they don't have any control over one another, so there's no problem.
Okay. So also about that being two, having two positions, you know, there's no conflict for as, how should I say this? Because you're putting it in a, you got it within a family. You got the decision makings for the city when you, for as on the planning and on the civil service at the same time, making decisions for the city, and these are family members. So this is why I'm, I'm just asking this, because I'm making sure that we're being careful for, before we make a decision, you know? So I just, I want to make sure that we stepping in the right direction, because I don't want us to go way down the line and then there's a hiccup. So if you sure, then okay, but if there's any doubt, we need to know that.
I'm confident there's no ethical [inaudible].
Okay.
Is that all you had, Councilman?
That's all I had.
Councilman Delott?
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you. Councilman College?
I'll just say that on July 29th, Councilman Alvin and I interviewed the top two scoring candidates for the Civil Service Commission. Both Sheila Daly and Victoria Hoover performed excellent and are, in my opinion, both qualified for appointment. After interviews were complete, Councilman Alvin and I came to the consensus that Ms. Hoover, Dr. Hoover, performed best overall during the Q and A session, and therefore has our recommendation for appointment to the Civil Service Commission. And I said, emailed our attorney to make sure there was no conflict of interest due to our husband sitting on planning commission, and came back that everything's free and clear, so that was our recommendation. As always, I do my due diligence before giving something like that.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
I'll just follow along with what Adam says. I'd like to thank all the applicants that applied. I mean, you're volunteering your time basically to help the city. The two applicants we did interview did an excellent job, and I thank you both for applying as well.
Thank you, Councilman Alvin. Um...
It's not a big question. I don't need to come up here.
Okay, if you hold on, I'm going to let you come to the podium, because I did skip over, apologize to public comments, so, um, come, or stand up there, state your name and address, and I'll let you...
Sheila Copen, 2712 Calle Hermosa. Does the Civil Service Commissioner and the Planning Committee ever have a...
No, ma'am.
Kind of cross?
No, ma'am. Civil Service, Civil Service is employee-related.
Mm-hmm.
Planning Commission is citizen-related.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other citizen comments on business agenda item number one? I just want to thank all the applicants. You know, when you're looking for volunteers, in today's world, it's hard to get volunteers. And so we did, we were blessed to have a lot of volunteers for the Civil Service Commissioner appointment, unlike in years past when we were recruiting. They all were qualified, in my opinion, a lot of them. They all, I mean, it was a hard decision, but the council came up with the way we all rated them. Each one of us rated the candidates, and then they came down to the top two, and we selected volunteer for a committee from the council here in a council meeting, and I thank the volunteers who did the interviews and their due diligence, and our attorney for following through on the ethical questions for us. So, once again, want to thank everybody who volunteered, and Councilman College and Councilman Alvin for your volunteerism to do the interviews. We have a motion by Councilman Alvin, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Motion...
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining. Councilman Jackson is abstaining. Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, creation, defunding, and funding of specified positions and approval of the revised schedule of authorized positions by Ms. Yancey.
Yes, Mayor. As you know, we had a, in the past, a part-time public defender. When that person got elected as a judge, we defunded the position, and the public defender for the county has been acting as the public defender. That will no longer be done, or no monetary compensation. Therefore, we're asking that you refund the part-time public defender position so that we can go out and take applications for your consideration. The other one, in regard to mechanic, we had a mechanic that worked back there with the senior mechanic. I've been talking with Scott Anderson and the senior mechanic. They felt like it would be more efficient for the city to defund that position and get a maintenance helper who could actually float between helping the mechanic and helping maintenance and helping recreation when needed. We felt like that was a better use of the position and the resources, so that's what we're requesting.
Thank you, Ms. Yancey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? No. Do we have a motion by council to approve the creation, defunding, and funding of specified positions and approval of the revised schedule of authorized positions?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Delott?
The public defender is going to be a part-time position, right?
Yes, sir.
It's not, you don't know how many hours they would be working, it's just when they need somebody in the city court.
Normally, it's, the court normally needs each Monday.
Right.
And the public defender is there, of course, very efficient in the city at allowing them to go first. They spend anywhere from 15 minutes to 30 minutes on normal, if I'm not correct.
I'd say, I'd say between 15 minutes to an hour. This is the most difficult.
So that's basically what the position would entail.
If you're just being in the city court during a period of time, somebody requires a public defender.
Correct.
But you'd be up, you're saying up to an hour?
Up to an hour. But it could be as short as 15 minutes.
Yeah, okay.
But when we've done it before, we had to set monthly salary and per, so we're going to advertise it based on the way, by refunding it, you're refunding it like you was previously, so we want to take application, but you choose the public defender. So we take those applications and submit it to you with the recommendation, and you choose.
And this person will also be in the per system, retirement system of the state, right?
It's per and part-time salary, yes, sir.
Part-time salary. Okay, thank you.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consider a request for a 477 square foot variance for a dwelling in an AG agriculture zoning district located at 5900 Brown Road, GPC number 24-17-VAR by Planning Director Scott Ankersen.
The planning department received this request from Crystal Viera and Stephen Brown. The application fee of $175 was paid on April 15th, 2024. All public notice requirements were met. Some background on this property, it was a house and a separate garage apartment on property. The house was heavily damaged. It was in the process of being demolished when this application was submitted. The garage apartment is not there, so the applicants were requesting to live in the garage apartment so they can build a new home. The apartment's 848 square feet, the garage area is 875 square feet, can be converted into living space, and would occupy the existing apartment. The applicants would need 477 square foot variance. The unified building ordinance requires a minimum of 1325 feet of living area in this ag district. So, I do want to say, at the planning commission meeting, the applicants, toward the end of the presentation and the discussion of the planning commission, they delited to the fact that they were not going to move forward, they decided that they would just wait and sell the property as it is, but I'm not certain the applicants are prepared to manage if they're not here. That may be why we tried to contact them to see if they had to retract their application. We couldn't get in touch with anyone. Included the criteria for approval from the UDO for your review, and the planning commission recommended the city council deny the request. City council may approve the variance request presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the request. Applied to meeting minutes and other [inaudible]. Thank you, Mr. Ankersen.
Do we want to table this? Do, no. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Any public comments? Is Crystal Viera or Stephen Brown here? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and deny a request for 477 square foot variance for dwelling in an AG agriculture zoning district located at 5900 Brown Road, GPC number 24-17-VAR, PID number 82429350.000?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, we got a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Delott?
I did hear you say they now decided to just sell the property as it is?
During the planning commission meeting, they, they did state that to planning commission, they were, pretty much, the guy that gave the presentation, which was Mr. Brown, at the end of his presentation, he said, I think we'll just sell the property as it is.
Okay, thank you.
And we tried to contact them several times.
Since then?
Asked if they were officially withdrawing the application, and we could not get in touch with either.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Councilman College?
Yeah, just reading through the minutes, like Councilman George mentioned, this was apparently tabled first time, at planning commission, then they came a second time. The first time they had, it seemed like there was confusion, it was just the wife, and then the husband came in on the second meeting, and they weren't sure what exactly they were going to do with the property, and it seemed like they were going to move to Tennessee, so this is probably the best course of action for them, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
I want to thank one of our planning commissioners is here this evening, Mr. Josh Ward, to my left. Josh, will you stand up? We thank you for volunteering on the planning commission. It's basically a volunteer job, and they do the best, and I think we got a great group. So, as you heard, the applicant did come to one meeting, it was tabled again for a second meeting to try to accommodate them, and their accommodations just could not be met, so they said they would sell the property, and I was at the planning commission meeting and heard them say that, so. We have a motion by Councilman College, second by George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four, consider a request for a 17 square foot variance to assign square footage requirement previously approved as a special exception in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 3001 Ladner Road, GPC number 24-25-VAR by Mr. Scott Ankersen, our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Promise for a 17 square foot variance to sign square footage requirement. The application fee of $175 was paid on May 21st, 2024. All public notice requirements have been met. So some background on this, I'm sure y'all familiar, or some of y'all are familiar with this nonprofit Pregnancy Resource Center. They're basically, they were allowed a sub-precise sign originally in 2006, when they were allowed to have this business at this location, and they're asking for their sign to be able to be a little larger. So this would require a 17 square foot variance. Included definition hardship in the [inaudible] review, and also the review criteria for variance. Recommendation, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance presented. The city council may approve the variance request presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the variance request. Again, I've included the meeting excerpt through review. I'll answer the questions later.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? No public comments? Is Rachel here?
Yes.
Rachel, will you stand up? For you all that do not know, this is Rachel, and she runs Promise on Ladner Road, and if you have not been by Promise, I encourage you to go by there. We are blessed in Gochae to have a lot of nonprofits, Promise, Volunteers for Medicine, American Legion. We just got so many great resources here we should be blessed and thankful for. But Promise does a bottle drive, and you can get an empty baby bottle and put your quarters in it and drop it off to Promise, and they will be glad to take that bottle filled with those quarters. It is a great thing if you have a nonprofit or your church looking to support a nonprofit, I encourage you to get with Rachel and help them with their endeavors down there on Ladner Road. Thank you, Rachel. Do we have a motion by council to accept and approve the planning commission's recommendation for the request for a 17 square foot variance to assign square footage requirement previously approved as a special exception in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 3001 Ladner Road, GPC number 24-25-VAR, PID number 85106184.000?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
It is a very beneficial organization that you run, and we're very thankful that you're in that role, and you have Melissa there by your side, and other people in your organization that really do a lot for families. Thank you. Hopefully this sign helps bring more awareness to your organization. Thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, just thank you for participating on Ladner Road, you know, as a supporter or two. Thank you.
Councilman Delott?
I pass that place just about every day, and I say I know that y'all are sometimes very busy there. I see if we wanted a commission of this, if y'all was illuminate that sign at nighttime. Said something about a small spotlight at night. Y'all get one and turn one across the street at Hurley Ray's house, too.
How's that make that light?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman College?
Just one question, being that this was a previous conditional use, has there been any letters or any opposition to this sign since? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, we do thank you for the service that you provide this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Alvin?
No comment, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, consideration of a special exception that would allow a mobile home to be located in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 2132 Daly Road, GPC number 24-20-SC by Planning Director Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Fernando Rodriguez for the special exception that allows a mobile home in R1 district. Application fee of $250 was paid on May 3rd, 2024. All public notice requirements have been met. Some background on this property, the general features, it's approximately 4 acres. The mobile home's existing, it was, it was a mobile home that was a legal non-conforming structure, and it lost its occupancy, it became vacant for a period of 180 days. So at this point, it's not legal and non-conforming, so it would require this special exception for this mobile home to be reoccupied as the area has been rezoned R1. Included the review criteria for a special exception as listed in the ordinance and the definition of hardship in the UDO. The planning commission recommends the city council approve this special exception presented. City council may approve this special exception, approve this special exception with changes, deny this special exception. Again, I've included your minutes excerpt. As you have read through the minutes, I'm sure where you see there was talk by the planning commission of how this is in harmony with the area, because there are other mobile homes immediately in this area, so that's maybe a note to consider. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Any public comments? Do we have a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation for a special exception that would allow a mobile home to be located in an R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 2132 Daly Road, GPC number 24-20-SC, PID number
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
This, this is just an existing trailer that's already existed, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I'll just make sure. No, no further comments?
Well, actually, it had been blighted, and we voted to abate it, didn't we, Mr. Ankersen? Didn't we vote to abate this one at one time?
I would have to, to be sure, but I would have to look at that question.
Okay. I thought we voted to clean it up at one time. Councilman, is that all you had, Councilman? Councilman Delott?
Did I hear somebody say the trailer already exists there?
Yes.
So we just approving it after the fact?
It was a legal non-conforming mobile home, so it was at one time legal for the rezoning in 2010, when that area was rezoned to R1. So it was, as long as it was occupied and didn't become vacant for more than 180 days, it remained as a legal structure, but it became vacant for more than 180 days.
Didn't have power.
Didn't have power.
Correct. And actually, the power company turned the power on to this mobile home without our inspection permission on accident, and then went back and turned it back off. And that's what, that's how he came to come to the planning department and ask for the [inaudible].
So I'll come and turn the power off, so they got to come in and give a permit to...
Well, they were supposed to do that before the power company turned it on, first of all, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That all, Councilman Delott? That's all?
Yeah.
Okay. What's that, Councilman? College?
I think actually this area was rezoned to R1 after our annexation. I don't think it was 2010, I think it was more 2005 when that was done, and I know the reason behind it, talking to the first councilman for the Ward 5 area after annexation was they were trying to, you know, promote some stick-built homes in that area, being that it hasn't really taken off in that time, and under the specific circumstances in which this has been brought to us, with them already making the repairs to the main effect of home prior to them knowing that it was non-conforming use, still gives me a little heartburn, but I can understand the justification behind it. Just for clarification, this is a special exception, so it doesn't run with the land, so if they ever sell the property, any owner would have to come in and get a special exception or it could be moved off.
Yes, sir.
That's right, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
He answered my question. No comment.
Done. Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
And Mr. Rodriguez, you understand that also, correct? Okay. Just so you don't go hire a realtor and try to say you sell it without coming, asking for permission. Okay.
I've got one.
It's on the record that you have been notified of it, so...
I have one other comment. If he, if the property becomes blinded, again, we can go ahead and revoke this special exception, correct? It's about following everything by the UDO.
Yeah, it gives us the allowance to revoke the special exception.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. Councilman Jackson, you keep in your hand, though. I'm having a hard time seeing you tonight.
So that means I can never sell the property without having to build a house?
Well, you just need to contact the planning department, they would have to go through the same process she went through.
I'm not planning to sell it.
Yeah. Okay. You're welcome. Business agenda item number six, consideration of a special ex, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for cleaning it up. Consideration of a special exception that would allow an accessory building without a primary structure in the R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district located at 913 Roy's Road, GPC number 24-24-SC. Mr. Scott Ankersen, planning director.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from James Thomas for the special exception that allows accessory structure on Long Island Primary Structure in R1 District. Application fee of $250 was paid on May 15th, 2024, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some background, the, this is a .63 acre lot, where there's potable water and wastewater water source available. The current surrounding zone is R1 low-density single-family residential. The current surrounding land use is vacant, I'm sorry, yeah, the current surrounding existing land use, this is vacant. Comprehensive plan of future land information of low-density residential. Comprehensive plan, future land designation, low-density residential. I've included the review criteria for special exception as allowed in the UDO under section four point sixteen point four, along with applicant's responses and the staff's findings to that. The recommendation is the planning commission recommends the city council to deny this special exception. The city council may approve this special exception, approve the changes or deny this special exception. And again, I've included the excerpt from the meeting. I did want to say that this request began with a visit to our, to our planning department, and it was, originally they wanted power to this, to this vacant lot, which we do not release power of vacant lots. And it was basically talked about and asked to me, how, how can we get power to this lot? And I said, well, one option would be, and actually the only avenue I could think of would be if you would want to put an accessory structure on, since you own property across the street, you know, it's not continuous because it's divided by a street, which we, we have in the past approved, you know, that on, on a lot that's across the street from our property. However, in the past, those lots haven't been buildable lots, they've been smaller lots that you really just put a house on. This is a little different, they didn't have to build a home on. However, they wanted to know what was an avenue, how could they possibly do it? So I said, this would be my avenue. I just wanted to preface this whole case with that, so everybody understands on the council, that, you know, we were just trying to help find a way to get power on the lot, and they said they would be willing to put an accessory structure on it to do it. So, do you have any other questions? I'll have to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? If you do, come to the podium, state your first and last name and your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Kristen Allen, I live next door at 5609 Dead River Drive. I live next door to this lot and catty-corner to the gentleman doing this. I wouldn't have a normal problem having power there, but he owns a construction home. My terrier, there's tearing up of my road because he's got tractors in there, he's got duallys, this, this is a very narrow street. There is a sunken old ship bunker on that property, and he is a doomsday guy, and he was trying to get power to that bunker so that he can put storage of whatever supplies he needs. That was the whole gist of him getting power was to get to this underground bunker. It's got, I've been in it, it's not safe in there, it's over seventy years old, it's even got rooms that have like a safe door, like a submarine door that drops down underground. I had the, the privilege of living next door to the trailer that was on top of that bunker, and I'm the one to contact the city to have it torn down. The bunker stayed there because it was too costly to remove the bunker. So we had squatters that were in there, we had drug users that were in there, and I'm next door with the same people. I'm the same parent with the dog. I don't want power to that bunker because I don't want construction equipment next door to me, I don't want more hoodlums in my neighborhood coming to, you know, get equipment. It's not safe. This is a residential area, and our, our neighborhood is amazing until this. It is awful. He made it pretty, but if you set foot on that property that he swore was gonna be this, you know, community thing, if you put a foot on that property, you parked your head to your car on that property, he'd come out there and make sure that you did immediately. His dogs, including my daughter's school does because he won't put them in a fence. He lets them lay out in the middle of the road, you can't get around them, it's just a mess. So we've had coding out there, he's got two people living in two RVs on the property he lives on, and he has an adjoining lot behind his current property that he can build a shed on. So this is just a ploy to get power to this bunker. So I would highly appreciate it. Not a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any other public comments on business agenda item number six? Do we have a, and I do not think the applicant is here, this, James Thomas is not here, and his daughter spoke at the planning commission on her, his behalf also, sort of, so is Jamie Hannah here? Does she wanna speak? No? Okay. No more public comments? Do we have a motion by council to deny the, accept the planning commission's recommendation and deny the special exception that would allow an accessory structure without a primary structure in a R1 low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at 913 Roy's Road, GPC number twenty-four dash twenty-four dash SC, PID number eight-one-eight-zero-seven-zero-six-one-dot-zero-five-zero?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman George, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Delott?
Somewhere in the planning commission, minutes or so, it says there's stuff already on this property, there's boats and--
Yes.
Boat trailers, a Conex container and that. Is that allowed? Code enforcement is-- Code, so code enforcement? What about also understand--
Code enforcement, what?
That's okay, so, Ben.
Oh, okay.
Also understand that he crossed the street at his house, he has a couple RVs hooked up there? Are we looking at those, too? When has code enforcement been out there?
They went out there the week that the, of the planning commission--
Okay, well, when will he be notified of this violation?
He's notified, I just don't know whether they're at the process of, you know, I mean, we can't go move them, so if he doesn't, if he doesn't comply, then we'll have to take the next step, and they may have already taken the next step, I'll have to look into and see what we're at on it. But it would eventually make it to the court, and then the judge will decide what to do if they don't comply.
Please let us know.
Yes, sir.
I know that particular neighborhood has always had problems with people not, how can I say it, live enough to code.
Got that right now.
Bingo.
That's all I got.
Councilman College?
Well, I mean--
He said exactly what I was gonna say, so no further comments.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, doomsday bunkers are not illegal, but a accessory structure on a lot without a home, over a bunker or whether a bunker's there or not is what's against the code. But doomsday bunkers are not illegal.
I know.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
You have one?
I'm never till. But that's all I got.
Oh, goodness. Councilman Albert?
No comment.
I just wanna thank the citizens who came. I wanna once again thank the planning commission because that was a very rough planning commission evening, and Mr. Ankersen, kudos to him and the staff and the planning commissioners and the citizens, but I, you know, it was a rough evening at that planning commission meeting, and I'm just glad all of y'all, I feel, did the right thing for this area. But I also wanna ask the city manager, she can ask the police chief to get animal control and let's, if the animals, we have a leash law and let's enforce it.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion by, we're past the citizen comments on that item. I'm sorry.
Another point for the same thing.
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilman George, a second by Councilman College, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational RV in a mobile home park in the Merck MW mixed-use recreation commercial Mary Walker zoning district by Planning Director Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received this request from Howard Easton, third, for a conditional use major that allows an RV in a mobile home park in the Merck MW District. Application fee of two fifty was paid on May eighth, 2024, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some background on the property, the total area of the mobile home park is eleven-point-four-seven acres, and the comprehensive plans, future land use designation for this property is recreational commercial. I've included the review criteria for the major conditional uses outlined in the UDO, along with applicant's responses and staff findings. I will say that the mobile home park is a grandfather mobile home park, it wouldn't be allowed to have, you wouldn't be allowed to put a mobile home park in the Merck MW District, but because it was pre-existing, it's grandfathered, and the ordinance does allow for a mobile home to be replaced with a new mobile home, but no new mobile homes can be brought in that aren't pre-existing, if that makes sense. So as they dilapidate, as they are damaged, they can replace that specific mobile home on that lot with another, just can be expanded to include more mobile homes. Also, I will say that RV park is allowed in a Merck District. But an RV on a single lot is what requires the conditional use, and because he only wants to place one RV on this lot, that's why we're here, asking for the conditional use. The recommendation from the planning commission is that city council deny the conditional use major. City council may approve the conditional use, approve the conditional use for changes, and deny the conditional use. Again, I've included the minutes excerpt, and I'll, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any citizen comments on business agenda item number seven? Any citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council for a conditional use major permit that would allow recreation RV in a mobile home park in the Merck MW mixed-use recreation commercial Mary Walker zoning district located at 3101 X Street, GPC number twenty-four dash twenty-one dash C?
Are you asking if we give a follow-up to the planning commission's recommendation?
Yeah. Or not, whichever one y'all wanted to.
I'll make a motion that we accept planning commission's recommendation, deny the placement of the RV.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Delott?
This Merck area is a very discombobulated mess. We need to figure out what we can do down there because if you ride in there, you have trailers, and you have RVs with decks on, and I know they've been there for a while, all sizes, so it is very confusing to someone to try to move an RV in there or replace a trailer. I know at one time, the UDO said if a trailer was taken out, you couldn't put another one back in, and we really had a fight over that. But anyway, I'm very confused about the Merck, even though it's in Ward Three, and I was a Ward Three councilman when we created the Merck District, and I thought it was gonna be allowed to continue, for lack of a better word, a fishing village. And I know that people bring RVs in and they take RVs out. So we, I think we, the city administration, needs to take a look at what we can do to improve the situation down there. Maybe in these trailer parks, maybe they could designate an area for RVs, because there's, what, there's two trailer parks down in that area? You know, and I know a guy just built a big boat shed back in there, and at one time he approached me about allowing RVs in there, too, so I told him he had to, you know, apply for that, so. Lack of a better word, I think it's a mess down there. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Delott. Councilman College?
I agree with what Councilman Delott said, I mean, it might be a good idea to kinda have a little community meeting in that area and kinda get an idea of what it's ours and wishes. I know we've got some residential streets that are strictly stick-built homes, and we have some camps, we have some RVs, we have some manufactured homes, and it seems like particularly the specific areas where they've got the manufactured home and trailer parks seems to be causing the biggest issues. I understand this part is they're pulling out a manufactured home and wanna bring in an RV. I mean, the picture of RV looks a lot better than most manufactured homes, but at the same time, we're trying to abide by UDO and residents and residents in that area also, so. I think we need to do some due diligence, and I mean, it might be to a point where we try to do a moratorium on RVs in that area until we get, approving any future RVs in that area until such time as we can come to a consensus for that area, so.
People's either moving them in and out without permits.
Yeah, so, and it's hard, I mean, we have, can't have code enforcement watching them day in and day out to see if--
I understand.
Yeah, so, gotta come with something that's gonna be both beneficial to the city and the residents in that area, and something that code enforcement can also monitor at the same time.
Maybe we can go in and designate certain areas for RVs, maybe the city can do that and ask them to pick certain areas within that trailer park that designate as RVs. I don't know, but something's gotta be done.
No further comments on it.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I kinda agree with Councilman Delott and Councilman College, that's a mixed-use mess down there, we don't know what to do next. We allowed an RV on the corner there several years ago, and, because that's what it is down there, it's fishing camp community, boats, RVs, boat storages, boat sheds, accessory structures everywhere, and yet we gonna deny a man with a very expensive RV, he's gonna be up in the middle of the woods in there where you can't even see it, around some trailers that, like he said, don't look near as good. And is it a possibility he could have a combination RV and mobile home park?
Yes, Councilman Anderson, so I'm, I requested after the planning commissioner meeting, I had suggested to the property owner, Mr. Easton, and then we talked before the meeting because we do have some mobile home parks in the city limits that have RVs inside them mobile home parks.
Yeah.
And just, you know, this was, I feel hard on the planning commission, that evening when they voted, I was at the meeting, and it was a hard, they were torn because they're trying to set protocol, and right around the corner, in a residential neighborhood, it was denied because all the residents didn't want an RV where there's brick-and-mortar brick, built homes.
Little different situation.
Right. And in this, but they feel they need to follow, if they don't do it once, they have said they feel they should be consistent. So that's why this unfortunately got denied. And just a little bit of history, and Mr. Al Easton, who is the owner of the property, is here this evening, and we appreciate your investment in keeping your area clean down in that area, and he has a mobile home park. It was a 1974 mobile home that got damaged, that had to come out, and due to the cost, it's cheaper and more feasible to buy an RV at this time rather than a manufactured home, because a manufactured home could go back on that property today. So they were just trying to do and be more cost-effective, the people who lived in the mobile, the manufactured home, go to a mobile home, which this mobile home looks, I mean, this RV looks better than the manufactured home that was there in 1974.
Did I finish?
Yeah, so now I'm giving you some history, because you weren't at the planning commission, and I wanted you to know the--
I appreciate it.
So the planning commission was hard to make a decision, basically.
I know, I understand. So the possibility stands, he could ask for whatever it takes to turn it into a multi-use park?
He could, he could create an RV park in this Merck MW District by right without needing any special permission.
And just keep the mobile homes in there.
He could follow the criteria of the ordinance as it pertains to creating an RV park, putting in the streets, lighting, whatever it requires, I'd have to look and read the specifics of it, but yes, he could do, he could create an RV park by right in this district.
And you got a lot of property there that there's nothing on, right? If you wanted to add more to it, in the sense of RVs?
The mobile home that was there was buried, I don't know, property, that was out of the water, and a tree fell on, and it's early, the lady that owned it gave property or something, they would hear anything with it, so I couldn't get up. So now, one is sold, put in that area, it's around eighty, ninety-five dollars, and they come two times a month to fish, to watch the house, and who won't spend ninety-five dollars or plus to come two times a month to go fish?
I understand, as a fishing community, restaurants, restaurants.
If I didn't meet all the requirements, and live stark, you know, running out of lights, I'm only out on the ground, trying to get through making the requirements, I've read the requirements, you know, it would be feasible for me to keep the clientele that I've got there, and I'm trying to keep the same clientele, because I only have seven people that live there full time. You have to have some, you have to have somebody in there, you know, but to keep the cost so they can use the fish camp, down, and forward the power, you know, if I spent that much, I wanted to jack it up six hundred dollars a month.
Yeah.
So who can afford that?
Well, Mr. Easton, am I correct, this one you cannot see from the road, correct?
You cannot see it. The only way to see it is drive inside the park. It's behind, the only women on the, the only house is behind the house, so you'd have to drive behind the house to actually see it.
So your plan is not let the place up with more RVs?
No, we're only, this is the first time, you know, I, I really don't want the RV because it'll move me to move out, move me to move out. All I, the people that I have in the park, most of them have been there with me until they die, and then most of the time, after some of their children will come in, you know, it's been that way. Now, when I first walked the park, it was a whole different ballgame down there. It was, I brought my, my gloves when I came.
Well, that's the question. I'm just trying to give you some ideas of what you can do to do that.
It's a whole different thing.
I understand. Okay, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, councilman Anderson. Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
Can I ask one more question? Manufacted, and your, manufactured homes are rated, at least the newer ones, to meet the hurricane ratings and with the tie-downs and the acreage, where an RV is meant to be moved out. They're not set in that way. So, I mean, that can be an issue with our insurance rating also if we approve this and we get a storm in and something got a lot of damage due to an RV not being moved out in the case of a hurricane.
Well, our ordinance does require even for RV parks that they be road-ready at all times.
Yeah, but I'm saying if it wasn't, or if it was road-ready and it wasn't moved out, then would that possibly have any impact on insurance?
That's not the city clerk question.
I'm just curious, because I mean, I know the purpose of an RV is that it can be moved in and out because they're not meant to sustain the winds and acreage of a hurricane, seven days a year, so, okay, that's, that's a question.
Um, yeah, and I, you know, just like the planning commissioners, but I feel, you know, Mr. Easton has his property, he's kept his property clean, and a manufactured home versus RV, it's Merck, he can have a three hundred square foot cottage in that area if he proceeded, so it might be that he could just put a little shack there and be cheaper than this RV, Mr. Easton, because it is allowed if it meets all the tie-down requirements.
That was a question, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this your RV or the people that's going to be moving there, renting?
It's, it's the, it's not my RV.
Okay, it's the homeowner's.
It's owned by them. And they rent and buy, put it from me.
Okay, that's, okay, I want to clarify that.
That's the same way with the mobile homes, I don't own any of the mobile homes.
Yeah.
Are they planning on leaving it there full-time, or are they going to take it back and forth with them as they come?
The RV?
Yeah.
They'll leave it there full-time, they, they come, they're big into this NASCAR racing, they pull out, they get the races, they come back, and they, they've got some other park down, down there that they get to some other fish camp, they pull down there.
They'll be taking the RV with them when they go there.
They keep it in and out all the time.
It could really be temporary.
So what you're saying is not there full-time then, they're taking it?
No, it's not there full-time. The concrete pad, as you're seeing the picture, was in front of the mobile home that was there, and they just pulled it behind the concrete pad, just using it to cover what was there.
And it's out of sight of everyone. Way in there.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Wait, this is to deny? To go with planning commission's recommendation?
Mr. Bill, plan. Yeah, go with planning commission.
Um, all opposed?
I understand.
Oh, really? Come on now, councilman Jackson. Yes or no?
I oppose it.
Okay, four to three, so the, um...
So a motion failed.
Your motion failed.
Does somebody want to make a motion to go ahead and approve?
Does it get approved when the motion fails, right? Or no, we got to make another?
I'll make a motion, we approve the RV and that's fine.
Second. We got a motion by councilman Galot to approve a second by councilman Anderson. All in favor? All opposed?
You ain't voting?
I ain't voting, I'm abstaining.
Motion carries. Councilman Jackson and College abstained. Councilman Albin was a nay, and...
I voted with it.
Oh, you changed it.
Yeah, I voted with it.
Jackson voted with, four to three.
Four to.
I mean, four to two and one abstained.
Now it's worth it.
Approved.
Did you know what, did you know what you're doing?
And I do want to say, y'all, y'all, so you down here, you got a problem down here, come on, I will back here. My ground, I'm cleaning up, I think you asked Scott, we have cleaned up, see, money on the trash, it's my responsibility.
Would like to see you go back to the...
I would keep you myself.
Planning commission to maybe designate an area in there for RVs.
And also, I just want to clarify, the planning commission was in a hard spot that evening, and I feel they were trying to help you, but they were trying to follow their guidelines.
I understand, I understand. Wait, there's no more.
We, thank you for your investment here, Mr. Easton.
Thank you.
Business agenda item number eight, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational RV on a individual lot in the Merck MW mixed-use recreation commercial Mary Walker zoning district, GPC number twenty-four dash twenty-three dash CE. Planning director, uh, planning director, Mr. Scott Ankrison.
Thank you, mayor. The planning department has received this request from Karen Cooley. The application paid two hundred fifty dollars to pay on May 10th, September 24th. All public notice of apartments permitted. Some general features of the property, approximately 1.26 acres. The existing land use is vacant. It did previously have a, a structure on it that was demolished several years ago. It was since I've been in the city, so it's been in the last nine years. Comprehensive plans, future land use designation for this area is recreational commercial. Again, I've included the major conditional use review criteria along with the African Consequences and Staff findings. The planning commission recommends that city council deny a conditional use major. City council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional use major for changes, or deny a conditional use major, and then you have the immediate minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrison. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number eight? Any public comments? Ms. Cooley is not here, and also, her stepdaughter, who spoke at the planning commission meeting on her behalf, is not here either, I do not see. So we will move forward. Do we have a motion to deny the conditional use major permit, accept the planning commission's recommendation, and deny the conditional use major permit that would allow recreational RV on an individual lot in the Merck MW mixed-use recreation commercial zoning district, Mary Walker zoning district located at 3224 and 3228 Willis Drive, GPC number twenty-four dash twenty-three dash CU, PID number eight seven four two zero one zero eight dot zero 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 and eight seven four two zero one zero seven dot zero zero zero.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilman George, a second by councilman Galot. Any discussion, starting with councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
Is this in the same area?
Yes, same.
This is on a residential. Oh, it's on a residential, okay.
It's on a residential.
Gotcha, I gotcha, okay, gotcha. Little comments.
Councilman Galot?
Is there any way, and again, I'm going back to the Merck area, where we could separate out the particular streets that have homes on them and go back to R1 and get them out of the Merck area?
Would have these spots on them, wouldn't it?
No, it's just, it's not, if you go up, if you go up one street, aren't you R1 over there on Mary, where you go down Mary Walker, it's that whole area down there.
It's all RMW. Going back to your question though, where you're concerned about the area being hodgepodge or mixed match, I mean, the options I see for that, just, you know, off the top of my head are rezoning. We could possibly look at going like the Merck MW1 and Merck MW2 and trying to separate out an area for the RVs versus an area for, you know, residential homes. But the problem is, is we have to look at what's existing and consider that in those areas. So if you have some RVs that are existing with conditional uses in an area that you might want to change zoning to say a Merck MW2, then they wouldn't be allowed to stay. So, I mean, it's, it's going to be a tricky situation. I would definitely love to hear any comments, but...
I like your idea.
Yeah.
Split it up.
Of course, that would be a rezoning, so we'd have to go through the rezoning process and if that's, you know, proven to be necessary, prove.
It's going to solve a lot of the problems down there.
It's going to look like a jigsaw puzzle.
Well, it does, you still would have a Merck area, but you would have a one, two, three, and you define what can go in one, what can go in two, and what can go in three, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
It could be a, it could be a overlay, could be another overlay district.
Well, another option would even be to change the use table, which still would be considered a rezoning according to our city attorney, but you could remove the conditional use allowance for RVs on single lots and only allow them in RV parks, or you can allow them in the mobile home parks that are existing. So there, there are different things that we can consider to talk about.
Okay, great, come up with something.
All right, I'll leave my question.
Thank you. Councilman College?
Yeah, this is, I mean, it really is a mess because where this applicant, their property is, is two properties over from where we just approved the non-conformant, well, not a, a structure without an accessory structure, without a primary structure, and he had talked about potentially wanting to put an RV there in the future, so two, two properties over, and I imagine that coming to front of us before too long, so, yeah, I think we need to try to take this under our belt and see what we can do to make this, clarify this specific zoning. No further comments.
Thank you, councilman Elbin.
Can I say something real quick, ma'am? So if we rezoned in that area, they wouldn't have to come through, do the process again like the planning and go across, come across us again. They would, okay. That's all I got.
It would all depend on what we did on the criteria for the zoning.
I got you.
We would set the policy and he would have to follow it.
Right.
That did it, councilman Jackson. Yes, sir, that's councilman Anderson, your turn.
Here we go again. Mary Walker Bayou, right there where they want to put this little trailer. It's right beside the Tiki restaurant fixing to open back up with loud music at night, at night. You got the Mary Walker Marina over here with a thousand boats in it. You got another marina on this side right there, in all in its circle, fifty, twenty, fifty boats, I don't know what it is. Boats all up that bayou, boats all the way up into the Tiki area, nothing but, that's a marine fishing camp area. Nobody is going to want to build a two hundred and fifty to a half million dollar house on that little piece of property that's about two feet above sea level, unless they build a skyscraper. And then they're looking at nothing but ten boat roofs and boats and, and a restaurant. So this area should be suitable for a RV, mobile, a RV home that could be carried in and out when the tide comes up. And he could move a forty-foot or fifty-foot yacht right there and dock it at his dock and live on it all day long. But here we are denying him to put a little...
It's a ma'am. It's not a him. It's a lady.
A ma'am.
It's Ms. Cooley.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cooley. But anyway, you get my point? Like we're going back, we need to get this fixed where we can allow these things without even having to come to us. In, in this particular area, if somebody's going to build a house there, the house that was there was a fishing camp, or it's a two-story, and it got wiped out in Katrina because they finally tore it down. And right now, it's got a sunk sailboat, I believe, still there, which you probably need to get up. Well, I can't see this denying everybody, in certain areas where we just denied one two weeks ago, around there in the middle of some big nice homes, I understand that, but right here where this man wants this one, I can't see denying this, that this looks a place as far.
Councilman Anderson, it's a woman, it's Ms. Cooley.
I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Cooley, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Regardless who it is.
I know, but you keep calling her a ma'am.
Regardless who it is, that doesn't matter. Look, that's all I got.
Councilman Elbin?
I just agree, it's a, it's a mess, it needs to be fixed.
Well, I had the pleasure of attending the planning commission meeting, and Ms. Cooley is not here tonight, but I did have something I'd like to tell her, because she accused this whole council tearing down a Fairland heirloom and was very derogatory towards the elected officials here in Goche, Mississippi. I want to let all the citizens know, we did not vote to tear down this nineteen forty camp that's painted, this third painting over here to my left, and then if you go down a few more, there's a second painting of that beautiful camp that was on the Mary Walker Bayou that you heard councilman Anderson speak about. Unfortunately, people don't clean their property, and city has to go and clean it for you. So that is where we landed. And the city of Goche had to clean up the belighted property, so if you can only imagine if we approved a mobile home to go on this property, how belighted...
Mobile home RV.
RV, how belighted it might look. Also, she does not mow her property currently. Councilman Anderson, all the residents down in that neighborhood mow it, and if you've not been on the road lately, right before the property, it's a home. To the left, there's homes, there's mobile homes to the right, I mean, RVs to the right, and then a home on Buff's Tilts, and then there's four cabins being built that are stick built right there adjoining her property. Right across the bayou is stick built, not RVs. So it is one...
That suggests you build a cabin in. Maybe she should.
Well, and clean the sailboat that is littering, that DMR is going to maybe have to get because she is not taking care of her property.
Has she been the original owner of this too?
Yes.
Okay.
And she came here and you voted on the abatement too.
I understand.
I know, but I want to give some history about it so everybody can see what the nice camp looked like, that we wouldn't have had to tear down if somebody would just restore it and clean their property. We have a motion by councilman George, a second by councilman Galot. All in favor? Councilman Jackson?
I raised my hand.
Okay, motion carried. Your hand's not getting up there, councilman Jackson, get it up there so I can see it.
Did you...
I voted for it. Now that you took the hat off, I voted for it.
Okay, so you voted, um...
It was unanimous.
You took the hat off, Ms. Cooley, so I voted for it.
Okay, well, I was just wanting to remind you of the situation and that she was dogging the whole board out in the meeting. Business agenda item number nine, approval of the docket of claims that has been provided to us by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery, and I would like to wish... wish her a happy sixtieth birthday. And she is not here this evening. She never takes off...
Don't never say a woman's age.
Yeah, me and you are not doing that.
Wow, she looks twenty-one. She don't even look sixty.
You shouldn't do that.
I hope I look that good. We're not sixty.
How old are you? You got a birthday cake here. How old are you today? It's your birthday yesterday.
Yesterday, Councilman Anderson. Anyways, I am proud of my age, so I'll tell you, tell you about forty-six. Anyways, I just wanna thank Teresa Montgomery, our city clerk, for all of her hard work, and I hope she is enjoying her day. It's all about her today. So with that being said, do we have any public comments on the docket of claims? Do we have a motion by council to approve the docket of claims?
I make a motion, we approve docket of claims for purchase of new E one fire truck in the work of the county of Goche Senior Building for Douglas Construction LLC in total amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number ten, approval of the docket of claims again. Do we have any public comments? They've been posted online for public review and council. None. Do we have a motion to approve the docket?
I make a motion to approve docket of claims, provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galat?
Can I make one comment for, just for clarification to the public? That previous motion were for two items that did not make it on this specific docket agenda, so that's why we had to add it up to back as a second docket. So we had two docket claims on this particular agenda.
Thank you, Councilman College. That's so we can get our bills paid on time. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Galat. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. I like those little fingers twirling. You do it great.
Is that his jazz hands?
Look, he's got his jazz hands going on. He's getting ready for jazz. Okay, that brings us to our consent agenda. Does anybody wanna pull any of the consent items? Okay. They'll be approved in one motion. Consent agenda item number one, approval minutes from the recess council meeting held July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Consent agenda item number two, received June twenty twenty-four finance reports. Consent agenda item number three, approval of the professional services agreement between the city of Goche and Jackson County Circuit Clerk's office. Consent agenda item number four, approval of the final pay application and other closeout documents for the town commons phase two B Great Line site work project. Consent agenda item number five, authorization to submit an application to the Mississippi Arts Commission for the Mississippi Songwriters Hall of Fame and Performing Arts Center. Consent agenda item number seven, authorization to accept the donation of two inflatable boats, two motors, and one boat trailer for the Goche Fire Department from Philadelphia Fire and Rescue. Consent agenda item number eight, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Goche's Cruising Through the Decades event. Consent agenda item number nine, approval of water and sewage adjustments for August twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Consent agenda item number ten, authorization to remove broken equipment from the city of Goche's inventory. Consent agenda item number eleven, approval of the Civic Plus Civic Engage Agreement renewal and addendum and authorize, authorize the city clerk to pay upon approval. Consent agenda item number twelve, resolution directing the placement of liens on properties located in Goche, Mississippi for fees and charges incurred by the city of Goche to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code, Section twenty-one dash nineteen dash eleven.
Mayor, I'd like to pull number three for, for further discussion. Is it number three?
Anybody wanna pull any other ones? Do we have a motion to approve one through two and four through twelve?
I wanna pull number five.
Okay.
I guess I could just say, is that submitting an application for a grant?
Yeah, that's what that is.
Okay, then.
Don't leave it on. Okay. So we're gonna approve one through two and four through twelve. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number three, approval of professional services agreement between the city of Goche and Jackson County Circuit Clerk's office. But we're gonna have Ms. Shantsey because Ms. Montgomery's celebrating her birthday.
Yes, what this is, is you relive with this activity. And so due to that, we have to get all of the address catalog and all of the boundary lines to turn over to the circuit clerk. Which charging you for is entry of those lines into what's called the SIM system, which has to happen so they can send out the new notification and voting cards to the people. So this is just this small piece of entering the redistricting information into the SIM system.
Okay, so we're not changing voting precincts per se. Okay, that's all, I was just, I was reading through and I was...
Well, they did. Not us, but they did. The circuit clerk's office did. We're not.
Like if somebody used to be in Ward three and is now in Ward four and all y'all, you know, that all has to be entered into the SIM system for this election and for future elections. So that's what this is for.
I, I was just curious because if they were setting the precincts also, I know for state and federal elections, we have the varying precincts around the city. I know in municipal elections, we only have the one precinct, so I didn't know if they're gonna try to go to just one precinct for the entire city.
I don't think any of the precincts are changing. They gotta tell you if you're, if you used to own this and you can now own this because you moved...
Martin Bluff did change. They moved it.
Well, they had to.
They had to. Martin Bluff Hickory Hills, that precinct changed to Goche Vincle Road. That's the only one that changed.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on that. So therefore, I make a motion to approve professional services agreement between the city of Goche and Jackson County Circuit Clerk's office.
We got a motion by Councilman College. We got a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Galat?
No.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda. The study agenda, that is discussed, citizen comments. And we will go down our sign-in list. You have three minutes. State your first and last name and Councilman College, and address. Councilman College will notify you when you got one minute remaining. Madison Gardner.
Good evening, council. My name is Madison Gardner. I live at five six oh nine Denver Drive, right with my mother, Christina Allen. And I came here on behalf of opposing the entire thing with Mr. James Thomas's request for the structure. I would like to say he's made the neighborhood beautiful, and we love and thank him for that, though there is an issue with the leash law, right? He doesn't have his dogs on a leash. He just got a puppy, a new puppy, and he has left him outside multiple times. The dogs that he does have, they include the street, and my bus has trouble getting around in the morning and the afternoon to go out there. And we just feel that it is an issue that he, we've, we've requested that he put up the stuff because of the leash law. We don't want him getting in trouble for that. And he, he hasn't done anything. We know that. We know that's his choice. So we're just concerned because we don't want the animals getting hurt, and we also don't want any trouble with the roads. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madison. Kudos, Madison. That took a lot of courage to get up here, but one of our youth, our future leaders, kudos, Madison, for coming up and speaking for your neighborhood, and we are proud to have you in our community. And as you heard me ask Ms. Shantsey to ask our police chief to get the animal control up there and get that situation tended to. That brings us to Kristy Allen. You already spoke on that.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Gentlemen, Ms. Paul, I am a crossing guard for...
Sorry, my address, please.
Oh, your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thirty-five seventy-three Mountain Drive. I live in Goche. I work for the police department as a crossing guard at College Park Elementary. And I would like to come to find out if we can talk to somebody about getting us a rate or point us in the right direction so that we can. Because we work in the heat, we work in the bad weather, sometimes most of us, my lady friends, my partner, Ms. Sherry, Ms. Quinn at the middle school, she's been there for over seven years, she's only had a thirty-nine cent rate. Sherry and I, we've been doing it for years. I'm new at it, too. Nobody has said anything to us about one. So we'd like, we would like to know if we can get one. Because Ocean Springs, they're giving sixteen and twenty dollars. And that's not fair to us with the same temperatures and probably different considerations because Graveling is closed and it's more traffic. And I've been almost hit twice by a speeding car, a truck, and a bad-mouthed lady, which got three tickets that day because she didn't wanna slow down when we told her to. So somebody needs to, either one of you come out and join us for a week and see how you like it.
I trust it, girl. I see y'all working hard.
Come and stand with us in the heat. Then you'll see what us ladies go through. So if you could tell us if we could get one, I'd greatly appreciate it. Or if you could point us in the right direction, that'd be perfect.
Well, you fall under the police chief, so, and he reports to the city manager. So your request, but they just heard your request, but you can still tell them your request.
Good. I told them to.
Okay, and then they will see what we can do in the budget.
And by time that's in, we don't have a police officer in the morning, we don't have one in the afternoon, and we're supposed to. Because the ones that we did have, they're on a different shift now, and they were all time-giving tickets out. So, oh yes, it is most appreciative if we could get one, and I would appreciate it. And my lady friends and my partners, you did.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Shantsey heard you and said that she favors, and we will see about a comment that you request.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank y'all for y'all's hard work. We appreciate you. Especially keeping our children safe. Fernando Rodriguez, he left because he was speaking on his item. I'm ninety percent sure. Mr. Charles Moore. Mr. Charles, first, you are gonna be so happy if you've not seen it yet, but it landed here today. And you are a Gator fan, and you live and breathe Goche Gators, but our new fire truck arrived to be at those games. So I had to tell you because you're gonna be ecstatic. It looks fun.
He was blue though. So when he was there?
Yes, yes. Now go ahead, but I know you're a Gator fan and I wanted to tell.
My name is Charles Moore. I live in nineteen twenty Westgate Park with Goche, Mississippi. I'm sitting here by Russ Anderson, the commentator, and Alyssa May, and he says, but he hasn't proved himself, about African-Americans. You know, he's called them the N-words and all of this and blah, blah, blah. We asked him to resign. We've been asking over a year, so he's in the finals.
I proved myself.
No, you haven't. So we still have to step down.
Haven't proved me guilty. I proved myself.
Alton Ray. I'm assuming it was Alton Ray. No Alton Ray. No Ray. Patrick Brown. Sorry about that. I was already closed to citizen comments, but that's rather cheap.
My name's Patrick Brown. I live at fifty-six oh one Dead River Road. And actually, all I wanted to do was maybe ask her, next time that code enforcement guy goes out there to be look at that car lot we got on Roy's Road there, that school. There's eight cars, and then right in that front yard in the day, there's four in the backyard. There's a construction trailer. On the way down some time, there's a piece of construction equipment on that trailer in the front yard with another pickup truck. The after garbage day, the trash cans are out by the road over there. They probably, I don't know how many people are crashing into that house.
What house was that from the end?
Right next to the old meth house.
Wonder where they invaded that house? I don't know much about meth houses.
Okay, the house, the, the people moved out and put all their stuff right up under the power lines, and y'all had to clean it up.
Yeah. Taken advantage of that house, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, the abatement house is what I call that house. This is right next to it toward the school.
It's the next-door neighbor. It's a rental.
Right.
Ms. Drankerson, you heard.
Meth house, yeah.
Thank you.
Next door.
Next door to that house.
Right, that's all I need.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Della Moore.
Good afternoon.
Well, I see we have a cake up there for somebody.
You want a plate?
I just wanna say, most of us here, there, doing a good job. And we know he's not going anywhere, so I just wanted to say, is there anywhere y'all could do anything about the grass that's really growing on Martin Bluff Road? I mean, you're not working it, so at least the part that, one part of you not doing very much on it, and the grass is building up so high, the neighbors are complaining because they feel like snakes are coming in their yard. So is anything y'all could do to kind of bring the power down and do something, any of those things?
I think...
Ms. Paul, if you're talking about the ditch, I think, in that area, along that construction area, that the grass, you can't cut it because of the silt fence and stuff.
You could weed, weed, weed.
They could weed it. Yeah, that's a, that's a mess.
Contractor is on the project, it needs to be...
That ditch?
They need, we need it, just pay it.
Well, let's pray for no rain, Ms. Moore, every day, because they're waiting to pay. They want to pay. So let's, let's pray for no rain so we can get it, Martin Bluff Road completed. Thank y'all for coming and showing an interest in our city and sharing your comments. That brings us to our council comments. It's the first meeting of the month, so we start, and I would like to wish Councilman George a happy belated birthday also, and also Deputy Chief Leibon a happy belated birthday, too.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be honest with you. July sixth.
Oh, sorry, Councilman Anderson. You were not here at the meeting, I don't think.
Hey, are you gonna repeat their ages since you talked about the other lady?
Well, they've not reached a milestone to look, and look so, and look so youthful as Ms. Montgomery does, too.
Every year's a milestone to everybody.
Councilman George, you got anything?
I don't, I have no comments. Thank you for the birthday wish. Your one's it.
Councilman Jackson?
Oh, this is my comment, right?
I got lost there for a minute. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Moore for your, you know, for your continuation to, because I'm a revolutionary type of person, so I always continue to fight for what is right. And, uh, just thank everybody for coming, uh, sorry it took so long and this beat, and I have no more comments.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Goatt?
Change the murder area.
Councilman College?
Uh, yeah, I would like to feedback what you mentioned earlier about planning commissioners and Josh Ward, I know they have difficult meetings at times, and we certainly do appreciate, uh, their input, their recommendations, and their comments that are transposed into our council items, so we can see what their thought process was and their questions. So we'll put that out there. Uh, second, if you didn't attend this last Saturday, that was one heck of a concert at the Sound. Now, there were a couple of male singers there on, you know, Gochay, Talking to Town and so forth, but for the most part, I think everybody thoroughly enjoyed it, I know I did. It was a packed house, even with the weather delay, it seemed like everybody else, everybody came back and watched the show, and it was, it was something to witness for sure, especially the, the video and light show in conjunction with the music, and I thoroughly enjoyed myself, and I look forward to the next concert.
Thank you, Councilman College, Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, I agree with Adam on that concert, I, I had, was hesitant about going, it really wasn't my style of music, but that was one first-class production of video, lights, and sound. It was really nice, it was a little loud, it could have been toned down a little bit, I know a lot of people complained, but it was, it was a nice show, and we enjoyed it, everybody had a good time, I'm pretty proud of it.
A dozen people complained about it.
About a dozen people out of about five, six thousand that was there, yeah. But, uh, only thing else I got, Ms. Moore, I appreciate you bringing that, the attention to the Martin Bluff Road and the grass on that area, I've been tackling that for over a year now, and like, we can get the contractor to weed it, you can't use the sidearm more because of the silt fence and all of covers going across the road with concrete, plywood boards stuck up in the air, but it could be weeded, it might take a while, but it could be weeded. Thank you for bringing that to their attention.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Elvin?
Congratulations to the fire chief and his firemen for the new truck, it's a long time coming, it's very, uh, beautiful design, I think the city's gonna benefit from having that new truck on the roads. I'd like to thank all the employees, our contract employees, for all the work you do each and every day, it makes this city go wrong. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. Um, the librarian, um, for the Gochay Public Library, um, just exited the building, um, and I was gonna introduce her for the ones who might not know her, but I encourage you to go visit, we got a wonderful library here in Gochay, um, they have the teen college workshop coming up, they have a children's watercolor workshop, and also, if you want to be a part of a book club, they have Paige Turner's, um, book club, so get involved, um, our local library, um, they have great things. Also, um, Mr. Goldar is in the back, and I want to thank him again, um, for his community market efforts that he continues to promote in a positive light, and also his daily positive, and I repeat, positive, social media, um, comments on his, um, page that he is doing in the community, because negative gets around way more than the positive, so kudos to you for getting the positive out, maybe people will start, um, feeling energized by your inspirations. I want to thank the city staff for all their hard work, I know we've had some tough calls lately in public safety, and also kudos, um, to the police, um, fire chief on his, um, new Gator, um, swamp fire truck that the high school cannot wait to see in the swamp, um, for the ballgames. That brings us, also, I would like to thank, um, Latanya Lett at O Pinks, um, and we can share this delicious cheesecake, um, after the meeting, if you would like a sliver, we'll be able, I'll be glad to give you a sliver, um, of cheesecake.
I want a big room, Latanya Lett at O Pinks.
But we are glad to have her business that continues to grow and it's wholesale all of Jackson County, um, and I'm sure our finest in the planning department, Ms. Shanda Bang Addie Bang, made sure to deliver it for Ms. Lett, so I thank her, um, for doing that. That brings us to our city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, I have three items. Uh, the first one is, as known, we have gone out for RFPs for garbage, and when we enter this contract with Waste Pro, our current contract, expires September thirteenth, I requested that Waste Pro agree to provide garbage services until October seventh, which would be three additional weeks, in order to make the new contract coincide with your new fiscal year. The first of October falls on a Tuesday, which is in the middle of a week of drought, so that's how we came to October seventh. So I just ask for a motion to approve municipal solid waste collection and disposal services contract between the city of Gochay and Waste Pro of Mississippi. With the same terms and conditions as the general case is.
Okay.
For three weeks.
Do we have a motion to approve the municipal solid waste collection disposal services contract between the city of Gochay and Waste Pro of Mississippi?
If we could have it approved in substantial form, I just noticed a small.
In substantial form, so they can make, um, legal corrections to it.
I don't have much notice.
We have, we have.
Do we have? Councilman George, you make it. Councilman George.
Second.
Councilman College, second, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
The second item I have is we open the solid waste collections and just by way of explanation and process, we accept proposals, then we can select the company or companies with which to negotiate. Um, the optimum term is negotiate, so we try and make changes and save money the best we can for the citizens. So the order that I've placed in front of you, that we received two responses or two proposals, and this order selects both Pelican and Waste Pro to negotiate with. And hopefully, once I start those negotiations, I can bring you back some final things on August, that's within the second meeting's length.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Pelican Waste and Debris Management LLC and Waste Pro Mississippi, Inc. are the most qualified respondents to the request for proposals to city council? We approve the best interest of the city to authorize the city manager to enter contract negotiations with each entity in an effort to create a contract for solid waste collection and disposal.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Goatt?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion? Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Yes, uh, on the, uh, recycle part of it, you talked about maybe dropping that?
No, I, in the RFP, in the pricing, recycling was, did as an alternate, in other words, you got one price, which included garbage pickup, the brushy debris pickup, whatever they do, uh, all the roll-offs that we have, all the city events and stuff that we have, you have a price for that, price for additional car, price for storm debris, that's for storms that aren't large enough to call in, one of your exact contracts would still be less than a hundred thousand UPI.
So where does the recycle fit into that one?
Right under the deal, no, then we had another way, we had, same thing I just told you, with recycling, and they priced that. So what I'm saying is now we're gonna, it comes to negotiation, so when I bring it back to you on August the twentieth, or whatever it is, I'm gonna give you a recycling option with recycling and without recycling.
Okay, with, with recycling, could we let them find exactly what they'll take in recycle? Because people are putting stuff in here they don't take, and it, and it's a mess for them to have to distribute it, get rid of it, get it out of the way, but if we find out what they actually take, so we can get it out to the public, and I'm the same way, I don't know what we, can't put glass anymore, and we used to put glass, but a lot of people don't know that.
We had a fancy thing in our mail, in our.
Still, I know a lot of people read their mail, but if we could just get it described exactly what they want, what they don't want.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Don't forget.
Well, Councilman Anderson, you just confirmed with those people, don't they, putting their water bill, they don't get our flyer we paid for.
They might look at the amount, but they don't read every, every piece of it.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Goatt, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries, item number three.
The last thing is, I've got to remind everybody and invite everybody, we have our ribbon cutting for our inclusion playground at five-thirty on August thirteenth, we're gonna open it up that day, um, there'll be a very nice ceremony, um, decorations and nice ribbon cutting, and the donors and all the citizens will be there, so in case everybody's home, we can play on the playground with the ribbon cut.
The playground is that, that, um, on the town commons park, by the amphitheater, and it's our new inclusion playground. Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. That brings us to our city clerk comments, um, and our deputy clerk, Ms. Emily Dickerson is here, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. That brings us, and we're glad to have you here this evening. Um, that brings us to our city attorney, Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir, I circulated an agreement earlier today to council, uh, the agreement between us and George County, and I would just request that be approved.
Okay. Do we have a motion by council to approve the agreement with George County that was circulated by our city attorney?
So.
Motion by Councilman Anderson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, well, I hope y'all all have a phenomenal week, and, um, we are now gonna, do we have a motion to recess until August the twentieth, twenty twenty-four at six-thirty?
So.
Motion by Councilman Jackson?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, all in favor? I saw Councilman Jackson's hand.
I, I've got it high.
We are recessed.